You gotta see what you're saying.
Yeah. We'll go ahead and call the order. The town of Parsfield Planning Board meeting is in May 15th. First item is correspondence. A lot of correspondence. We had the decision letter for BOLA, Maine Water Company, and for Griggs. And we had the Griggs title company questions, the special town meeting timeline, or proposed timeline. And then, yeah, that was everything for correspondence. We did have one additional. It's about the workshop, just the email that I'd sent to everybody. That will enter in, the one from, what was that, April 26? Yes, April 26. Said just a heads up that I was gonna be in New Jersey next week, so I was unable to attend the workshop. If we could have it, great. If not, need to do a special meeting, may need to do a special meeting to make sure we're good. That basically needed to go through the two ordinance changes for LD 2003 and FEMA. Make sure that we are good with them. I said that I was good with the current versions. But once we've gotten consensus, we can vote in the regular meeting. In May, schedule the special town meeting informational sessions if needed. Said sorry for the late notice. I found out that afternoon. So entered that into correspondence. Any questions on correspondence? Then we'll get to the, we'll get to the special town meeting timeline piece later on in the agenda. Two sets of minutes for review. We have the April 13th, the powerhouse road ones that I had to fix after the Microsoft Word saved over it for me. So take a look at those. Make sure you were good with those. I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve them as they are?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Then we have the minutes for the regular meeting on April 17th.
Did Aaron steal your coffee?
Just give my coffee. I signed them.
That's why I'm here in back.
That's why I'm facing with you. Don't try to steal your stuff.
Everyone's good. I need a motion to approve the minutes. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Alan, do you need a minute?
No, I wasn't here. I don't think I could. Can I vote on this one? I was absent from this.
Yeah, but you can still vote on the minutes.
I'm still reading then.
Go for it.
I was reading about this, Edward Griggs.
Okay, yes. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Next, old business. We have LD 2003 land use ordinance changes. We have the SMPDC updates. We have our updates that we made to it and voted on two meetings ago, two or three meetings ago that we voted on. So we have those changes are all in there. Those were max lot size for ADUs of 800, or max building size of ADUs of 800 and max, or minimum building size of 410. We had the foundation frost wall insulated slab requirement as well. So those were the pieces that we voted in on those. I guess I'll open the floor to discussion on the LD 2003.
Everybody pretty happy? Changes?
It was the February meeting that you approved?
Yeah. Yeah, so all those edits have been made. These are obviously ordinance changes that are required to meet the new state law that goes into effect. You have to have this approved by the town July, July 1st? July 1st. So. At this point, we've got two ordinance changes. This and the FEMA draft, the floodplain management ordinance. The two ordinances that need to be updated, that we've received updates for. What we need to do is approve, or make a decision, approve or deny what we have so far. And then we can work on getting the timeline set out for special town meeting. Discuss whether we want to do an informational session for our workshop. And then also get it out and add in the weekly shopper's guide for the meetings. This is something that does have to get approved by the town, so first step is us giving our okay with what changes we made to what SMPDC made.
Can we get these both done at the same time?
Yes, we can do both at the same time. Yep. So does anyone have any questions on the LD 2003 piece, changes we made? I guess we need a vote to approve the changes in draft form to be sent to the town for approval.
Does this have to go into the selectmen first? I mean, after we approve?
Does it have to go to the selectmen? I don't believe so. No, I think ordinance changes, I think we can like we can hold. Obviously, obviously we have Jen, who's been here every meeting and fully aware of what's going on with LD 2003, so.
We probably should send them my informational copies all.
Yes.
Just let them know.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's all I think we should do with this.
No, I agree. Yeah, we definitely, definitely are gonna have to send. Once we finalize it, we'll be able to have a final draft and we can remove like the red lines. And so we'll be able to send them two copies. We'll send them the final draft and then the red lines that shows what's been added, what's changed. So that way they have a chance to see what what the changes were, so they're not trying to kind of decipher that. Right, yeah.
The one thing that I, is timeline's gonna be tight between now and July. We have comprehensive plan hearings coming up.
Yep.
That's separate item. Hearing and town vote. I'm going to go online.
Yep.
And then this in between, so I would probably recommend getting this done as soon as we can.
Yeah, I mean, from a priority standpoint, obviously I'm on the complaint with you, so from a priority standpoint, this is definitely priority over that because that doesn't have a hard deadline of July 1st?
No.
And so, you know. In floodplain management, same thing as a deadline. I think it's July 15th. July 15th or June 15th? July 15th. Yeah. So they both have hard deadlines that we have to get them approved by, so. Yeah, I think we can schedule. We, Desiree put together a couple of proposed timelines for us that one where we can use the workshop as a informational session and then have the special town meeting on the 12th. And then the other is a little bit more expedited and gets us a special town meeting on the 4th or the 5th of June. So those were the two. The two timelines that she was able to get together with kind of how the cadence has to work with sending the ads in for each of the because we'll have to do an ad for the public hearing and we'll have to do an ad for the special town meeting.
So you're gonna schedule both of them on the same public, public hearing, 2000 and the floodplain?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to get them both scheduled for
The same day.
Same day, same, yeah. So the informational session will be, or the town hearing will be the, on both of them. And then the special town meeting will be on both of them.
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Public hearing.
Since you're talking about timeline, it would be really nice to the clerk's office, is that how it worked in the clerk's office? If you did it earlier, the expedited one versus the day after the elections?
Yeah, that's my thought. Then we'd have a fallback date if something happened.
Right, it gives us, it gives us time if if it doesn't, for whatever reason, doesn't get approved. I mean, it's, again, it's
So I guess the one you, that Desiree put together, the bottom one, is probably more conducive to meeting a expedited schedule.
Yep.
And to give us an opportunity if something happened, to fall back to the 12th necessary.
Right.
If we do it the other way, we don't have a fallback date. It's in your package. Look, keep looking.
I did, I looked too long. I did not see it.
What's in your other package? Way near the back. No, not always near the back.
So I guess first things first, we need to, we need to approve, get motion to approve the LD 2003 updates to the town ordinance.
I make the motion to approve the LD 2003 ordinance updates.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Perfect. Okay. Next, we need to take a look at the
Floodplain.
Floodplain. And so this is an ordinance document that exists outside of our ordinance book.
Yep.
Which is its own, another concern. I don't know how many of those exist. I'm hoping this is the only one. But I think after we get through getting these done, we need to know what other ordinances are out there. We, I went to the informational meeting for the, with the state and, you know, they had mentioned that they had an ordinance for us for floodplain. And we had an ordinance in place. And mentioned that. I'd never seen that. They could forward it. And it was enacted in May of 2000. Yep. So. May the 6th. Yeah. And so these changes, again, I remind everybody, these changes are the changes that the state has gone through our previous ordinance. And made the updates. And made the changes and put in all the information that we've needed to put in. They've gone back and looked at all the FEMA regulatory requirements for the last 24 years and made sure that all the wording in there has been updated. And done so correctly. So this, this draft ordinance from NAM has all those in there. So I'll go ahead and open the floor to discussion on the, on the FEMA floodplain management ordinance. I guess it's not FEMA floodplain, it's just a floodplain management. FEMA, FEMA impacted, yeah. And so basically, this, this floodplain management ordinance has to be in effect for the town or anybody or it, what it impacts is anyone who has flood insurance. If we do not have this and we do not have these updates, then their flood insurance essentially is invalidated. And so if they ever had a claim and we don't make these updates, then they would likely be on the hook for whatever damages are caused. So obviously, this is an important one for us to get updated and corrected and make sure that all the wording is is most up to date as it can be.
Any idea how many people are on the flood?
I do not know. No, I don't know how many. I know it's, it's probably pretty minimal. But I would assume that it's more of the river impact than anything else. I'd assume there's some around the ponds that, there's a, there's some there that would obviously be impacted. This is pretty good.
So looking at the map, it looks like it's really only along the Ospe River. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, so that little stretch of land.
Can't really tell.
Gotcha. So that would be the only required.
That's all it's on?
Yeah. And is that the full length of the river? So I'm wondering, like that is a, that that's not just like the 10 or so properties that I'm thinking of on Elm Street, right? It's all the way down Secocas, all the way.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so from
Right.
the Ospe line, all the way down to the Cornish line.
Gotcha. So it's all the way to the Cornish line even?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I feel like there's some, there's a pretty decent elevation behind like your house, Alan.
It's 50 foot down to the river from the back of my property.
And you don't have to have flood insurance?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's 50 foot straight down.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that from the water company.
Yeah, it's way down there.
Exaggerated that hill was, yeah. So anything on floodplain management that anyone wants to discuss, or do we want to take a vote?
To discuss. Now we're just going to adopt the language that was suggested to us, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so we just need a vote to adopt the language, yes, exactly.
I make the motion to approve the new language for the floodplain management ordinance.
Second. All in favor? unanimous? Okay. New business. Scheduling public hearing for ordinance updates. So now that we've approved these, we'll get the I'll create the Desiree, I'll create the updated, or the, the non-redlined version of the LD 2003. Send that over to you along with the red line. And then you can forward that on to selectmen.
Perfect.
And selectmen.
Select persons.
Select persons. And that way they can have that, take a look, discuss, and then So yeah, we need to schedule two meetings. We need to schedule a public hearing. And then we need to schedule a special town meeting to vote.
Yep.
So the, the 5/29 public hearing and then the 6/4, 6/5 special town meeting gets us in a position where if, for whatever reason, something doesn't pass, we can make the change, gives us time to make the changes prior to the July 1st or July 15th deadlines. I think, and it also doesn't put a special town meeting the day after election, on June 11th, which May 29th.
Yep.
It's two weeks from today.
Go.
And then June 5th or Fourth or 5th.
So I put both because Tuesday, the office is open late, but Wednesday would be seven days post public hearing.
Yep.
So, and, and the fifth would be seven days post advertisement for the 29th. So usually statute says seven days. Again, that's kind of why I put both.
I'll make it a little easier. I cannot do the fourth.
There you go. And I think we kind of want the chair here for
Yeah. Yeah, I will not be able to be here for the fourth. So the, the fifth would have to be the day. So we'll do the public hearing first. Need a motion for date and time.
So the other thing is, I'm here at 5:00. If you wanted to schedule it for an hour earlier, you could.
On what, the 29th?
For either. I'm just saying, I'm in, I'm in the building. I usually get here around 3:00, so if you guys wanted to do it earlier.
Because is that on a
Or if you wanted to save, use the same time that you always do.
Is the 29th on a Tuesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
You don't have to.
5:30, I think, would be the easiest, would be the earliest I could commit to, just work wise. Workday ends at 5:00 for me, so. Workday never ends for some of us.
Don't.
Whatever. What do you guys say? Good with me? I'll figure it out. Do you want to go 5:30 on the 29th?
Just need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion for our planning board public hearing at 5:30 PM on May 29th.
At what time?
At 5:30 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Can't we cut you off?
She was saying we might get more people at 6:00.
What?
She was saying we might get more people at 6:00.
We don't need a lot of people. Let's people faster. Don't think so?
Aaron, I have one question. I know that Gloria Fermentz had signed it earlier on.
Yep.
Was that all that was required at that time? Did they have a public hearing to pass this?
No idea. I won't, I won't, I won't make you feel older by telling you what I was doing in 2000, but it, yeah, it
Oh, God.
I don't remember.
I feel a little
Yeah, I don't know if it was, if it was just signed in, if it was one of those deals where they said, you need, you need to do this.
Sign it or the town clerk sign it as, as a, not a courtesy, but as a record.
And the records online don't go back that far, so.
No. Doesn't matter if they did or didn't. We can't go back in time.
Thinking that'd be one less thing we'd have to go through in the public hearing, but I don't know. I guess it would be safe to doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the ordinance looked like back then, but according to what we do now, any ordinance changes have to be approved by the town, so.
Yes.
So I don't know if that was, if that was entered in, you know, that way or not, but we've got to do it that way.
All, all ordinances back to, I want to say 1980, Spago, were just true, they were approved at town meeting, but they were true copy attested by the town clerk.
Right. Yeah, and some towns, some towns allow for ordinance changes to be done by the selectmen. Some, yeah, there's certain there's a lot of different ways that so I don't know when ours, because our, I mean, the current version was updated in 2018, so I don't know if that was a change or not, or
We don't have any say in what it says.
Right. I mean, we certainly can make changes to it, but, but there's the, not the floodplain, not the maps, but the ordinance we can, we can update. We need to schedule the special town meeting. Again, 6/4 out of the question, so 6/5 gives us the seven day window, so that's ideal, but I'll take a motion for whatever people like to do.
I'll make a motion to schedule the special town meeting for 6/5.
At?
At.
6. Yeah.
The second.
All in favor?
Okay. So the two meetings are what now?
So the two meetings, 5/29, public hearing at 5:30.
Okay.
That'll be an informational
Discussion.
I will, I'll throw together a couple slides. Do we have a projector? We don't. Okay.
Might be able to hook up your laptop to, to the wall.
Okay.
It might interject also. Are you going to have, who helped you with this? Lee Feldman?
Lee, yeah.
I know Cornish had their SMPDC rep at the meeting. In case there were questions that you felt, and they, and they totally ran the meeting, so depends on how comfortable you are running it. But if you do have SMPDC, you might want to give them a heads up. And if you ran it, you got for it, we'll pay for it, so.
Right.
Send something on the website.
Depends on how comfortable you are with all the changes.
On the, for not having a planning board meeting on the 5th?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll need to
Danielle.
Have Danielle change the calendar to add the two meetings and remove the workshop. Or just change one to, from the workshop to the special town meeting. And then add in the other one.
Yeah, I was thinking, keep the workshop because if, but you can't vote in the workshop, because obviously you keep the workshop in case
Yeah.
you don't have the right outcome, but you can't vote in the workshop, so yes.
Yeah. Basically, if, if it doesn't get approved on the 5th, we'll have to schedule a special board meeting in order to get everything in timely. Just to give ourselves enough time to do it and turn, turn everything around that quickly. Yeah.
It's dead for some reason, it take over. If you could call it within 24 hours, right?
I'd have to look at the planning board ordinance.
I think it's within 24 hours, so we can do that.
I can call it, but I think there has to, I have to provide notification to everybody. And there's a certain notification timeline. It might, it's, yep.
Worst case, with we could definitely have another meeting before the end of the month.
Yep. It's in our bylaws.
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, 5/29, public hearing at 5:30, 6/5, special town meeting at 6:00 PM.
Do you want to do a motion to cancel the 6/5 workshop?
The what?
Motion to cancel the 6/5 workshop.
It's not scheduled yet, is it? Normally, we vote on any other meeting to have it or not have it.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think it's scheduled yet.
No, we just need to, we just need to have a vote, what she's saying, we just need to, that's the next item on the agenda, is to vote whether or not we're gonna have a workshop on June 5th.
I make a motion to cancel the workshop that you love having, or to cancel the workshop so we can have a special town.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? unanimous? You're good for the ads?
Yeah, I, I will try to put an ad together first thing in the morning. It's technically doesn't have to be till, to the shopping street till Monday.
Yep.
But if I can have it together and get it over to you guys, just to double check tomorrow.
When you do it, remind Debbie that those, I don't know how she has to earmark it a certain way, but that comes out of the five thousand for both those ads.
It's supposed to be on the same, it, since we all have the five thousand right now.
Right.
Take copies of it all and everything that we paid for.
Okay.
And then I'll submit it.
Beautiful.
That's, wow, that's a whole schedule.
And then.
For hosting lines for a special town meeting. We'll be copies of this and those, so we have the ad for the shopping street, because comes out next Wednesday, so we'll need copies here at the office.
Yep.
So if the, I'll be three please, so as you can, so I can, if you're getting those copies.
Yeah, I'm going to try to do it tonight. That way it doesn't sit in my email for a week, yeah. Yeah, it's mostly just accepting the changes and creating a new document, so hopefully it goes by easy, better make sure it's not on auto save, so I don't mess up that whole thing again. You're going to let Danielle know about the dates? That way we're good for that. One additional item for new business that, uh, came up, Jesse got a call from the title company for, uh, for Griggs. And they did not agree with our interpretation of the, uh,
The ordinances?
The, uh, what's it called?
The subdivision.
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 I can shore land, I can shore land. They do not agree with our, uh, our interpretation of that ordinance where it said about open space. So because obviously, we read it that way at the meeting. We had Eric here, you know, he, he, uh, he agreed with our interpretation at the time. I can also, you know, see it the other way where it is a subdivision because it's dividing a lot, a third, into a third parcel within five years. So really what we're looking for at this point is through additional clarification, you know, I suggested to, to Jesse that we reach out to MMA and just say, you know, this is, this is how our parcel reads. Here are the, here's the the, uh, breakdown of it and you know, get them to, uh, give us their opinion one way or another on, uh, what they think, whether they they see it as a, uh, a subdivision based on the second division in five years, or whether they agree with our initial breakdown there around uh, dividing is being accomplished by someone who has retained one of the lots for a period of at least five years as open space. So I seem to find I
I don't think that.
Drafted up. I drafted up a email for MMA. It said Parsfield Planning Board was reviewing and asked for one of our residents around the sale of a portion of their property. The title company was requesting them to get approval as a subdivision. Mr. Griggs has maintained ownership of lot forty-five since the seventies. Land is unbuilt, heavy for, heavily forested. In December of twenty twenty-two, he sold a portion of the lot and created, uh, forty-five A. Mr. Griggs attempting to divide lot forty-five again to create forty-five B. Uh, in review, the situation, the planning board determined it was not a subdivision based on the definition uh, of such in the ordinance. And I put in that whole paragraph that we had put in his letter. Um, I said, the planning board believes applicants maintain the lot as open space wildlife habitat for a period of greater than five years. Planning board is requesting MMA to opine on the decision, as the title company has rejected our approval stating that it should be decisioned. Decisioned as a subdivision. Thank you. So that was sort of my draft email that I was going to have sent over to MMA just to say, you know, I can see it both ways. I didn't want to tell them that, but I can see it both ways. I can see why this would be and, and wouldn't be, so. You know, I could see, I could see lawyers having a lot of fun with arguing one way or the other on this one.
Do you think it gives a little clarity?
Yeah, so I think typically what we've done with these is just need a motion to approve that we send an email to MMA for opinion on the situation.
I'll make a motion that we send it to MMA for a legal opinion on the motion on our letter we sent out to, uh, was it Griggs?
Mr. Griggs.
Mr. Griggs. And, uh, to be clarified by MMA Legal Department.
Yeah. Nice, second it.
All in favor? Desiree, I'll get that over to you. Oh, yeah.
Awesome.
Um, all right, then, uh, we'll open the floor for public questions. Sir? How are you? Get your windshield replaced?
Uh, they, they fixed the, uh, windshield, but I got hit again.
I see safe light there when I drove by.
Yeah, they passed, they passed it. I didn't want to get in the one. Just had a new one for a week to go. But, um, I'm getting the feeling that, you know, if you see something, don't say anything, but, um, listen to guys through the web, town website.
Okay.
Um, when you look up the select board and, and the planning board and the Z B A, it used to have the agendas on there and the minutes and the videos.
Yeah.
On the town website.
Right.
But it seems to have not been updated. A lot of it's on Facebook now.
Right.
But Facebook, you have to scroll through it.
Yeah, they should.
On our Facebook page, we have to scroll all the way down to try to look for agenda, minutes, and then go through all
All the dates.
All the postings and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, there should be, there should be like a hyperlink to those each day, right? Is what you're, what, what makes it easier.
That we have is pretty good because you could just look up, you know, agenda, you know, whether it's board or Z B A or planning board and see the agenda, minutes and videos and other.
Yeah.
It seems to be lacking.
Do you know about when that stopped?
Long time ago.
Long time.
You can click on and get the minutes now or the agenda, but.
On what? Facebook or, or?
Town website.
Town website didn't show it this week.
No, they didn't. You didn't have an agenda on for today, right? They didn't have an agenda for today, but they did for May first.
Right. But the old, the, the other calendar was pretty good because you could look up, you know, different years and stuff like that, so.
I don't know, I don't know that these guys have any say into that website.
The minutes are behind because I need to scan a set, but.
But you don't do the minutes until we've.
But there's only one set of minutes that isn't on the, isn't on the website, or two sets of minutes that should be on the website that aren't, and that's.
I don't think any of the videos are on, on the old, the old.
Well, we're not, we're not actually recording them anymore with a video camera.
But before it was a link, it, it was a link to YouTube.
Right, so, so the video stopped when we started using Facebook. Because we're not using a video camera, so we're not uploading videos. And I don't know, because we're live streaming, I don't know how involved it is to pull the video to post it.
Put it on the website.
Well, she should be able to link to the videos though, right?
There is a link. It says click here and you click on it and just like the select board meeting.
All right, but they should, you should be able to link to each individual video on Facebook. I know it's going to be a huge undertaking. It's, it doesn't look like there's been one. It looks like the last one was in December of twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So, yes, she should be able to link to the each specific video on Facebook.
The question is, is there a way to link it to Facebook pre-going live so that it automatically?
Yeah, you should be able to click on the video and then click in the, on the bar to get the, the webpage for that video.
If you have Facebook or is that Facebook public?
It's got to be, right? Yeah, and so then you can then.
You can go back. I mean, there's listings all the way to two thousand and sixteen on the Facebook page on the town.
Are you saying, Jeff, that it's just too hard to scroll through everything?
Yeah, you know, you can, all, all the little postings, whether it's voting or pickleball cafe and, and a video and then.
And then, so normally, normally.
It's difficult to do that, scroll through.
Well.
I'm just pulling your leg.
It's okay.
Well, so, so normally Facebook pages have the upper.
You can just click on videos and it brings up.
Right, so you can click on videos, but then some pages also let you do the search where you can search for specific.
Right.
Dates and stuff.
Well, let's see.
Parsonsville isn't letting me do that.
Jeff, if you click on the videos portion right here, it gives you just videos.
I'm just going on the town, the, on the town website, the old, the old.
Yeah, I'm just saying on Facebook, to make it easier, if you click on videos.
Yeah.
They're all labeled by date.
Some, some people don't like the use of Facebook. Sometimes you get a lot of negativity from Facebook.
You can get that everywhere, unfortunately.
Yeah.
True.
Yeah, and we can check with Danielle, see if she can add a link to the videos.
Yeah.
Um, if she's able to, I can, I'll work with her and, and get the link for each of the videos for the past year and a half.
The, the old way it was, you know, you could just go by year, by month and just click, 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 you know.
Well, and it's sorted so that you have the agenda, you have the minutes, you have the, and then you have the video, so I can, I can appreciate why it's.
I kind of like to do the research, sometimes see what, exactly what I said at a planning board.
Yeah, we'll check with Danielle to see if that's, if it's, if it's possible to hyperlink.
Website over anyway, so it might be easier to do it.
As long as, as long as everything's nice and easy.
But yeah, we'll check with, uh, we'll check with Danielle. I'll, cause yeah, it's a year and a half, so it'll be a lot of, a lot of hyperlinks in there, so I'll make sure that.
Yeah, like I said, the, the way that we had it before was a lot easier.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll email, uh, email her and see if it's possible, and if it's possible, then I'll, uh, I'll help her get the links. Any other comments, questions, concerns from anyone?
Is it your plan then, Aaron, to do the LD two zero zero three as a, as a planning board group? Or I just was curious if you might get one of the S M P D C people here or not? It's entirely up to you guys how comfortable you are with it.
I mean, I'm fairly comfortable with it. I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if we need to.
I noticed that when they had their meeting in Cornish, I don't even think they have a planning board there. I think it's just the representative from S M P D C.
Oh, really?
No.
Yeah.
And when, you know, you talk about attendance, it was seven people.
Yep.
Right, because it is supposed to be the selectman running the special town meeting. Planning board there to answer.
You could talk a little louder so people could hear you.
We haven't turned the air conditioner on.
What? Just turn my hearing aids up. I don't have mine yet.
I said the selectmen are supposed to be running the special town meeting. The planning board is there to answer questions.
Yeah, this will be for the public hearing on the twenty-ninth. I mean, I'm open either way. Again, I'm having someone from S M P D C, having Lee would have obviously be the one ideal one, because he's the one that helped the most with the changes, right? And, and wrote most of it. But again.
May be embarrassing for him to come up here.
He's retiring anyway. I don't know when.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, definitely. His effective retirement date may be already passed, so.
Oh.
I mean, you all seem to have a good handle on what you've been doing as far as the ordinance goes, so.
Yeah, I feel like we've been
I don't think.
kicking this can for a while. Be happy to, uh, have it finally out of our, our lap. Yeah, yeah, we've been working on this for over a year, so. All right. Questions? Anybody good? Need a motion to adjourn? We do not.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Workshop schedule?
We're not going to do it.
We're not going to do a workshop?
We voted to not have it. Because we're going to do a special town meeting that day.
Special town meeting same day.
Yeah. Okay, motion on the floor to adjourn, seconded, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.